I'd like to call this meeting to order. This evening we will be led by conflicted allegiance by Coast Guard Captain 138 from Chatham Elementary, led by Mr. Ron Major. Fellas and gentlemen, why don't you come on up here closer. Stand up if you're going to do this. All right? Just right in front of you here. Okay, that's good. So we're all going to stand up and then we'll just play. I'm Mike Rader. Go ahead, you're all ready? Back to you, you guys started.
United States of America and the republic which stands one nation under God, equal civil and liberty for all.
Good work, guys. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Good work. Hey, can you call both of you?
It's Vice Mayor Saleh. This is Boring. This is Mayor. You have a flyer. Mr. Gerber. Mr. Commander. Mr. Zarper.
Yeah.
Thank you. And thanks again to Coast Guard Captain. Appreciate it. You guys did a good job. We have a few special presentations this evening. First is an update from the Dublin Foundation. Jennifer Green, who is Executive Director, and Chris Kelly, Board Resident. Right to the floor.
Good evening. I am Chris Kelly. Proud to serve the community as the city's representative to the Dublin Foundation and my current president of the board. The foundation raises funds for and provides grants to local nonprofits to address the needs of our community. We celebrated our 30th anniversary this year and we are expanding our vision to include capacity building and donor designated giving as part of our federal grant agenda. To help us establish that, our foundation has hired its first executive director. I am delighted to introduce to you our new director, Jen Ring. Please present the foundation's report to council decision.
Thank you, Ms. Allbright. Thanks, Ms. Allbright. Hi, I am very excited to be the first executive director of the Dublin Foundation. As many of you may know, the Dublin Foundation started with the Dublin Foundation 30 years ago and it's saying with its home to get our first staff person, so we're pretty much excited. I actually served on the board for about two and a half years prior to taking on the staff position, so this is a cause and organization very near to my heart and I cannot be more thrilled to be in this position. As Chris mentioned, I'm just so gratefully the mission of the Dublin Foundation is to raise the best and then the first line to top organizations. It's really about our inner Dublin community, our state of the community. We consider the Dublin community as all of the communities around the community, strong and working, all the school kids come from, or about 40% come from outside of the city of Dublin, so we really consider that all of our community. And this will always remain our mission to raise that money and to make grants what we have, as we just mentioned, in standard edition of the foundation.
And we're really looking forward to becoming a community partner in identifying and trying to reach some consensus on how some of the unmet needs here in Dublin can be met from the nonprofit level. I'm a huge advocate of the philanthropic sector and really feel that the Dublin Foundation is poised to act as maybe that collaborative intersection where the public sector, the private sector, and the philanthropic sector can all kind of come together around the same table to meet some needs. We are in a unique position with the foundation that we can leverage both human and financial contributions to affect change in the community and that we're always working to meet the needs of the community, whatever they may be, and we all know that they're constantly changing, and so we really work very hard to identify really what's going on right now in our community and address those needs. We did just recently make our grant awards for the fall of 2012, and the Board of Governor voted to award grants to the Dublin Food Pantry of more than $4,000 to aid in their cause to provide more protein servings to more people. Their numbers are up, and actually, the Board of Governors has made it sort of their specific mission moving forward this year to work directly with the food pantry. We feel like this is a very pressing need in the community, and we would like to put some of our manpower behind the food pantry and the work they're doing there. We've also, the Board voted to provide another grant to expand and enhance the homework help center at the Dublin branch of the library. We'll be there tomorrow afternoon, making that check presentation and getting a tour of the homework help center, so we're really excited about that as we were involved in the original funding of the original creation of the help center. And then finally, we have given a grant to the Robotics Boosters Club so that they can further enhance the booster, or the robotics program within Dublin City Schools. We also are very honored that the Nick Rosansky Memorial Foundation has become part of the Dublin Foundation family of funds. We really are working very closely with Jenny Rosansky and her team to leave a legacy for Nick and for his girls, and we're very honored that Jenny has chosen to keep that here in Dublin with the Dublin Foundation, since Nick was such a huge part of our community and the community was so important to him. And finally, I would be amiss to not mention that the Emerald Celebration is coming up the last Saturday in February. It will be February 23rd of 2013. We hope to see all of you there. We will be featuring the President's Cup. We are thrilled to be an official event on the calendar for the President's Cup, and we're working out details with the President's Cup staff to hopefully provide a little bit of a sneak peek behind the scenes, so I think it's going to be a really exciting event this year. It's going to be a little different from past years, so if you haven't been for a while, this is a really good year to come back, and we're really going to make it a celebration of what Dublin has to offer and what our grantees are doing with the funds provided by the foundation that of course come from the very generous people here in Dublin and the community and corporate organizations that support us. So, that's all I have. We are always open for ideas, suggestions, ways that the Dublin Foundation can help within the community, so please feel free to reach out to me if you have any ideas on how the Dublin Foundation can move forward as we start this new little journey that we're going on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Thank you, Ms. Ring. Next up, we have an update from Jonathan Wiley, Chief Financial Officer of the Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Board of Franklin County.
Guess I'm not as exciting as the prior speakers.
I wouldn't take it personally.
I don't, I don't. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Jonathan Wiley. I'm the CFO for the Franklin County Adam H. Board, which is the Alcohol, Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board of Franklin County. Tonight, I'm just here to really refresh and stay in touch with Dublin City Council. We try to come out as often as possible to the different constituencies within Franklin County to remind them who we are, what we do for the county, and what we do for the city of Dublin. So with that, I will go on to my presentation. Real quickly, Adam H., or the Adam Board, is a unit of Franklin County. What we are and the way I like to describe what we do is we are an insurance company, if you will, for mental health services and addiction services for the uninsured population of Franklin County. And to the extent that some people do have insurance, we also cover those services that their insurance may not cover. Hey, I got a timer, all right. With that, we serve a continuum of care for crisis services, which is done through Net Care. Adam H. Board doesn't actually provide services ourselves. We are, like an insurance company, we contract with service providers. Net Care being our largest crisis center in Franklin County. You may also be familiar with Dublin Counseling here in Dublin. We have about a $300,000 contract with Dublin Counseling. Some of the other providers that you may be familiar with in our network of care include Children's Hospital, Nationwide Children's Hospital, OSU, Mary Haven, and Columbus Area North Central and Southeast Comprehensive Centers. So that's what we do. We fund services beginning with crisis care. We go all the way through from crisis care into treatment, community-based treatment. We also pay for residential-based treatment for services for consumers. Our services range everywhere from counseling to detoxification services on the addiction side. We also pay and subsidize for housing for the mentally ill and addicted folks who don't have public housing of their own. One thing I'd like to leave you with is that mental health and addiction services really doesn't discriminate in terms of socioeconomic status. Mental health problems or issues and addiction issues can strike anyone at any time, and it has really nothing to do with a person's position. So our services can and do serve not only the indigent, but also those who have income of their own. As I mentioned before, we are funded, we have about an $80 million budget going into 2013. Most of our funds, though, come through a property tax levy, which includes the residents of Dublin who live in Franklin County. We have a 2 mil, approximately 2.2 mil levy. It's a 10-year levy. We are right currently in the middle of that levy, so we won't be back on the ballot again for another three or four years for that new levy to come up. So we're not here to ask you for any money or any support in that way, other than your ongoing support and understanding of what we do. Within the city of Dublin, we've invested in the last year that we have complete data for about $650,000 worth of services, including the $300,000 contract that I spoke to earlier for Dublin Counseling. I think it's also important to understand, and I want to leave you with the message that, you know, our slogan is "Treatment Works, Recovery Happens." So the services we provide are intended to be what we describe a "hand up" and not a "hand out." We expect those who engage in our services to get better, to recover, whether it's mental health services or addiction services. Our job is to restore those consumers back into tax-paying citizens of Franklin County or the city of Dublin. With that, I've also left with you a network directory of all those providers that are in our network. I think some ChapStick, which might become helpful in the winter months coming up. I didn't choose that, but... And also a survey. If you could take the time at some point in your busy schedules to fill that survey out, that would be very helpful for us to get feedback from Dublin City Council on what you know about Adam and what you, other questions you might have that we can help you answer with. We can come and get those from you, or you can mail them all in at once. We're flexible in doing that. With that, I thank you again for your time, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay. Thanks again.
All right. Next up, we have an update from the Social Host Task Force and Dublin ACT, or Adolescents and Community Together Coalition, led by Jamie Burke, the ACT Coalition Coordinator. It's my understanding that you may be accompanied by some students this evening?
No, we do not have any students with us this evening, so I'll share a little bit about that as well. Why?
Okay, good. And it's my understanding that Councilmember Gerber may comment as well, so...
Yes.
The two of you?
Perfect. Well, I'm Jamie Burke, and I am the project coordinator for the Dublin Act Coalition. That's Adolescents and Community Together, and that is a collaborative group of diverse cross-section of volunteers, of folks who live, work, and play here in Dublin, all focused on the prevention and reduction of youth substance abuse. So I'd first like to start off by saying thank you to each of you for allowing the Dublin Act Coalition to be a part of this meeting and to share some of our exciting work with you. I'd also like to take this opportunity to recognize and thank each of you for your leadership as a council in the area of drug prevention and more specifically with regards to the prevention of underage drinking in this community. Your passing a few years back of an enhanced social host ordinance to provide greater awareness and enforcement is truly a point of pride for the city of Dublin. Since taking the position as project coordinator for the Dublin Act Coalition in fall of 2010, I've continued to receive phone calls and emails from those in drug prevention and coalition work both locally and across the state of Ohio, asking me, "How was your community able to do this?" And I know for me and the members of our Dublin Act Coalition, it's exciting to share with them that a key factor was the leadership of our city council and your understanding of the value of drug prevention, so thank you. This leadership brings me to further recognize and appreciate the work of both Councilmember Rick Gerber and Vice Mayor Amy Saleh, both of whom serve as true champions of the drug prevention work being conducted in the city of Dublin. Not only did they assist with the development and passing of our enhanced social host ordinance, but they understood that that ordinance cannot stand alone and that there needed to be an ongoing committed process surrounding this ordinance focused on education and awareness and that continued enforcement, and so they created the city's Social Host Task Force. The Dublin Act Coalition is a proud member of this task force, and I can say as a project coordinator for the Dublin Act group that's focused on long-term sustainable drug prevention strategies that I'm thankful that this exists and that these quarterly meetings happen to discuss what we're doing specific to social host prevention, what's working, what should we be sustaining, and then also what more can we be doing as a team, not duplicating efforts, but pulling our resources together at a time when resources can be scarce, to educate our community members and make sure that our community is engaged in active and consistent enforcement, so thank you. Now this evening, I have the pleasure of highlighting some of the great work being done by the Dublin Act Coalition. Specifically, each of you received a highlight document that shared the work of the Coalition for this past year only, and I encourage you that if you haven't had a chance to browse through those couple of pages, I tried to keep it short, but I am long-winded, so that's why I have notes, that please do so. What's exciting to me is when you look at the pages of all the work that has been accomplished in just one short year, that's the work that's been done by our volunteers, a diverse group, like I said, of adults and youth, important to point out, from across the city of Dublin, and some that are outside but who work here as well. And that, to me, when you look at that list, is exciting and encouraging when you start to think about the drug prevention efforts that are happening here in Dublin. This evening, we're going to highlight just one of those projects from the second year of our Drug Free Communities Federal Support Grant that was developed and executed by the members of our Coalition's underage drinking work group specifically. This project was truly a collaborative effort, developed in partnership by the members of that underage drinking work group and Dublin City Schools leadership. We were able to host a youth-led PSA contest with each of the three Dublin High School broadcast journalism programs. Students were asked to produce a video PSA with the following requirements. They could choose a topic that highlighted one of the following: Dublin's social host ordinance, the consequences of underage drinking on the developing adolescent brain, or the consequences of underage drinking on athletes and athletic performance. Then they could also pick their target audience, depending on their message, whether it was going to be adults or their peers. The Dublin Act work group provided them with the information that they would need, the content for their messages, so it would be consistent with what we're putting out to parents and community adults as well, and then we provided additional rules to them. We received 30 PSA submissions total, something very, very exciting, and it was really neat to pour through all of those and see how they interpreted those messages and what topic they selected, what audience they selected to speak to. Our work group then put together a judging panel of Coalition members that included school leadership, Coalition leadership. We had some folks from the Washington Township Fire and EMS and other community leaders there, and we picked a winning PSA from each of the three high schools. And our Coalition, as a result of the funding that we're receiving via the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, that federal grant I spoke of earlier, we were able to provide each school program with $500. And the students were also asked to formally present their PSAs at a spring meeting of the Dublin Act Coalition where they were awarded certificates as well. I wish I could recreate that meeting that happened in the spring for all of you, but unfortunately, all but one of our winners were graduating seniors, so they are off doing wonderful, great things, and the one who is still here was not able to attend. So I do apologize that they weren't able to be here, and you just got me instead, but hopefully this was some great information, and I would like to take a moment really quickly to show you all three of our winning PSAs. This is the order that they will be shown, and you'll see Sayoda's winning PSA first, then Jerome's, and then Kaufman's. Thank you.
This is the human brain, perfectly working system. This gear's job is planning and forming ideas as well as making decisions. This bigger gear is in charge of your thoughts and awareness. This last gear controls breathing and heartbeat. Imagine if all these functions were impaired at the same time. This happens when you're under the influence of alcohol. Doesn't work as well as you thought it would, does it? Think before you drink.
Athletic training is lost after one night of heavy drinking.
Drinkers are twice as likely to be injured.
Memory.
Critical thinking.
Underage drinking results in permanent damage to all these areas of the brain.
11.6 years old.
The average age that Dublin middle school students reported was the first time of alcohol use.
Power.
Muscle endurance.
And performance are all reduced due to the use of alcohol.
Reaction time can be affected even 12 hours after alcohol consumption.
Drinking is a choice. It can cause damage to critical thinking and learning skills, and teens who drink are more likely to be less successful in life. This means they can get left behind. Don't let life pass you by. Make the right choice and remain alcohol-free. For more information, visit dublinact.org.
Is that it? Okay. Do you have anything to add, Rick?
I do. I'll be very brief. You know, it's one thing to pass legislation, but it's another to actually, you know, set forth a community and try to affect the desired result, if you will. Shortly after the passage of the Social Host Ordinance, we got, Amy and I got a call from a couple of people from PERC and ACT and asked if the city would kind of help out with the education and awareness of the program. And so on a quarterly basis, we do meet members from ACT, members from PERC, from our police division, from our public relations, our school board, and members of the schools as well. And the objective was twofold. One, bring greater awareness to the issue of not only social hosting, but also the hazards of underage drinking, also the education of social hosting and also underage drinking. And it's really been kind of fun to watch over the last, excuse me, I guess it's been, what, now, three years, Jamie, I think, something like that, that just the amount of awareness and education that is taking place. And, you know, we've done a very good job of, I think, educating the parents, but it was now educating the underage, the teenagers and the schoolchildren. And as evidenced by these PSAs, I think you can tell that the community with our younger residents is taking foot. So I want to say thank you to Jamie, all the members of PERC, the school board, the chief and his division, and everybody else who's involved, and also Amy for her help as well.
Anything you'd like to add, Amy?
No, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Congratulations, Jamie. Thank you, guys, for achieving.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Moving on then to that portion of our agenda, allowing persistent comments on items not part of our agenda, and first up is Mr. Mauer. If you'd like to come forward, please.
Your Honor, members of council and members of management, I don't really know whether you want me to talk about this topic this evening. I don't know whether you had a chance to look at the list on there, and you might want to, to see whether you want me to talk about it. My hand is not, is taking this lessons from scrawl, and it's not the best. Topic clear?
Mr. Mauer, I don't know whether I can judge for all of council what they want to hear this evening, and I'm not sure from your note whether I can even discern what it is.
Okay, all right. The topic is Dublin as geopolitically radiant. Got the go-ahead on it? Here I go. This is about something the city is extremely good at. There are seven Dublins in the country, and this is the only one which picked up on running with the name, with dealing with one of the strains in the country of immigrants, that is Irish-American, and ran with it, and has produced, of course, a brilliant annual show which shows no signs of weakening and which has developed the skills to do that over and over. Last year, it was pulled off in a day, no, it was this year, pulled off in a day with the Polish-American celebration. Something happened and didn't happen the other day, which set me going on this again. The possibilities here are endless. What happened and what didn't happen the other day is something that occurred, I think it was within a year, it feels like about a year, when I told you about a Chinese instructor in the school system here who had developed a spectacular revelation of Chinese memory and delight. And did he put it on here in Dublin where he was a teacher? No. He took it to Westerville. Now, I noticed another thing the other day, just like this. Within the last week, I noticed in the paper that the local German-American group had celebrated Oktoberfest. Did they do it here in Dublin? No. They took it to Shawnee Hills. So you see where I'm going with this. There are possibilities here which should be exploited by a city which knows how to do it. Shawnee Hills probably should be a site for American Indian celebration of some kind. Or, now, I listed the other day when I was up here and the same thing, a whole list of possibilities, American Indian, Asian Indian, and I think these opportunities should not be forgotten, they should be seized. So that is my exposition at the moment of Dublin as geopolitically radiant. May have that program free. I'll be back. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Signed up next, two individuals, I'm assuming want to come forward together, Robin Lee Rose and Tim Sells.
Yes, I'm Robin Lee Rose. I live on Stonefence Lane in Dublin, and tonight I wanted to come to talk with you with Tim Sells to tell you about the newest published book about Dublin, and the title is "When Dublin Wasn't Dublin," and it's spelled D-O-U-B-L-I-N apostrophe. And it was written by Tim Sells. His ancestors founded this community, and he is going to share with you, each of you, some information about the book, and he's going to present you, Mayor, with a copy of the book. But the information he's going to share with each member here was written by my husband, Don Rose, and my husband edited the book for him and did so by choice and spent the last seven months working on it and has loved every moment of it. So it's a book that I think that probably every resident in Dublin and the surrounding area will probably enjoy reading. It's, Tim tells about his family that founded the Dublin area and then shares his family's stories and some history of Dublin. He also talks about the Sells Brothers Circus, which was founded by his family, and it was the largest, or second-largest circus in America during the 19th century. And Tim tells also about growing up in Dublin, living in Dublin, going to high school here, going to college from here, being in the army until about 1976, he moved away. The book can be found at the Dublin Barber Shop, the Dublin Village Tavern, Hair Smith of Dublin, Biddy's Coach House, the Morgan House, and Hella's Restaurant at this time. It's also available at amazon.com. So we hope you like the book. And we just wanted to make you all aware of it. You want to pass it out?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
I'm walking across the two rivers. I'm putting them up.
Oh.
I'm like Indian Bill.
Well, we like your choice of jacket. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Sells.
Oh, you're very, very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Sure. Is there anything you wanted to say, Mr. Sells? If you do, if you want to go to the microphone.
I'll be brief.
Sure.
Brevity is the essence of wit, which I have a little of. I just feel really at home here. It's a real, real pleasure for me to be here. I can see that very, very quickly Dublin is being taken care of very, very well. And I really love my town. And always have, and it's always been in my heart, and it always will be. And it's, it's just a pleasure for me to hear that beautiful word as I sit back here. Dublin, 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 just kind of rolls off your lips. And I just want to thank you for having me. And I hope you get this book, I hope you read it. And I hope you enjoy it, and I hope it makes you smile even when you've had a hard day. Thank you.
We look forward to it, thank you very much.
This is what it looks like. Red, white, blue. A circus. Circuitum. Yes, circuitum. Circus.
And I just leaf through it quickly. And I don't think any of us were old enough to be in any of the photographs in here. So that's the, that's the good news, maybe. But anyway, we look forward to it, thank you very much. Moving on to our consent agenda. Would ask council members if any individual council member would like to have any of the five items removed.
I would like to make a correction in the October eighth meeting. Page four, third paragraph up from the bottom. Mr. Reiner stated he'd also be open to the idea of having such a facility in this central part of the city instead of the central, although we'd like to do this, "party" of the city. So can you change that? Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else? Okay. With that revision that Mr. Reiner made to the October eighth, two thousand and twelve minutes, I would move that we approve the actions requested for the five items listed on the consent agendas. Is there a second? Anne, if you call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Salee.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Moving on to our second readings. Ordinance sixty-two dash twelve.
Authorization of City Manager to enter into a contract for health services with the Franklin County Board of Health for two thousand and thirteen.
Do we have any kind of update?
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Yeah, this, there's no change from this being previously submitted. Just in summary, this is a contract with Franklin County Public Health. It's for the provision of both health services and plumbing inspection services for two thousand and thirteen. The contract is based on a per capita rate of five dollars ninety-three cents per resident. The two thousand and thirteen contract is estimated to be two hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. This represents a three percent increase over two thousand and twelve. First time the Franklin County Public Health has had an increase in their rate since two thousand and nine. And staff recommends council approval of this ordinance.
Any question or comment? Hearing none. Anne, if you call for the vote, please.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes. Great, thank you. Ordinance sixty-three dash twelve.
Res zoning approximately one point three five acres located in the southwest corner of Dale Drive and West Dublin-Granville Road from BSCC Bridge Street Corridor Commercial District to CC Community Commercial District to facilitate the development of an approximately thirty-eight hundred square foot restaurant.
Thank you. Mr. Langworthy, whenever you're ready.
Mayor, members of council, I have nothing to add from the last. Between the last meeting or first reading of this, did get you a copy of the development agreement. So I suspect you may have some questions about that. Legal language or the other stuff, none of us understand, but Steve, I'll let Steve answer that. But I can answer some of the details to it if you have some questions about the development agreement.
Okay. Mr. Smith, do you have any comment?
Yes, just a couple. First of all, I received a call from Ms. Boring, and she asked me about precedent-setting with respect to this type of legislation and development agreement. And my comment on the record would be that I believe that this property and the owner of this property and the Wendy's Corporation is so unique that we are not faced with a precedent-setting action here this evening. We have a major corporate citizen with a large number of employees. We have, in this instance, we had entered into a previous agreement with them to incentivize them to come back here to Columbus and reestablish their corporate headquarters, which is something quite unique in the manner that we did this and the breadth that we did this. Secondly, we, in this development agreement, we got them to agree to limit uses on that site for some things that planning and zoning was concerned about. And I think council was concerned about SOB businesses, exteriorian businesses, and some other things. In addition, the, as we go through this area, this new area that we're involved in with Bridge Street Corridor, this is a very unique property there. And it's not one that we're going to find a huge corporate setting with a single store there. I think at the last meeting, council also raised some issues about previous waivers that have been granted. I think those were explained, that they do run with the property, that the signed waivers won't matter because they're so specific to the Wendy's store that they would not be useful to anybody else. And that if, in fact, that store should ever become anything else than a Wendy's store, they have to go back through the process. So I was asked to comment on that. And we believe that the, our staff drafted a development agreement. We worked through it with the Wendy's, with the Wendy's folks. And we believe that it captures the essence of what council wanted to see in that area and the concerns of the Planning and Zoning Commission with respect to that particular restaurant. Thank you.
Mr. McDaniel?
Mayor, I would just add that Mr. Hill and Mr. Fersor from Wendy's are also here if you have any questions of them as well.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
I would be interested in having them address the timeframe for the project, if they would.
Good evening, mayor and members of council. Dennis Hill with the Wendy's Company. The timeframe would be breaking ground for construction when the weather breaks in spring. And we hope to be open June or July.
Thank you.
Probably about three and a half months of construction.
What would your plans be for the existing site, then? Would you raise that?
Actually, there's been ongoing discussions with the city. I think the city has interest in acquiring the property.
Other comments, questions?
Well, I have a couple of questions, following up from last week, if I may.
Sure.
Steve, you mentioned that the development agreement has a provision in there that if the Wendy's restaurant ceases to operate as a Wendy's restaurant, then it goes back through the planning process?
Excuse me, another restaurant cannot go on that site unless it goes back through a development process through planning and zoning. In other words, they can remodel a Wendy's restaurant. Let's say fifteen years from now, they come up with another unique type of restaurant. They can come to us and they don't have to go back through that process. But if, in fact, but if, in fact, I'm looking here for the clause. We had it outlined before in the memo we gave you. If, in fact, it's anything but a Wendy's restaurant, it has to go back through planning and zoning for approval for a new development, new development plan on that site.
As one of PUD, as part of the Bridge Street Corridor, as another straight zoning?
It would stay in the zone district that it's in, but it would go through the final development plan process of the PUD process.
You know, I'm trying to think back, the seven years that I was on Planning and Zoning Commission, how many times, if at all, that we had a development agreement tied to a straight zoning situation? Do you recall others? All of you that were on P and Z?
Well, this is a unique situation because of the Bridge Street Corridor.
I think we did it with, well, maybe it had been before you were there, over by Embassy Suites. My recollection was that was a straight zone, and we did a development agreement there in order to solve the issues that very similar we're facing here. It's been a long time ago, so I can't, I mean, it's probably been twenty years ago.
Yeah, okay.
Dana's thinking maybe we did it with Montgomery, did we?
I'm not crazy after all. Yeah, we did one with Montgomery in as well, next door. And essentially took a look at modeling this after that concept. You may have more detail, or Jennifer may have more detail.
Don't recall what was in it, though.
I know we've done it once, Rick, and that was back when it was, we had a straight zoning on that corner there at France and one sixty-one. And we did there, we did it there.
Well, just by virtue of fact, everybody's scratching their head, it's.
Yeah, well, it's very unique.
It's very unique.
It's very unique, sir, I agree.
Well, that gets me into my other point. And I'll try to be brief, Mr. Mayor. But, you know, we spent a lot of time and money on Bridge Street Corridor here recently, as we all know. And I thought when we were, when that came to council, we were recognizing unique circumstances and said, well, if that's the case, and if waivers, if a planned site review would not quite work under the Bridge Street Corridor, then the applicant could go to the Planning and Zoning Commission and do a PUD. I mean, I thought that was the only exception that we recreated in the Bridge Street Corridor. I did not realize at the time, and I voted for it anyway, that we were going to allow people to opt out of the Bridge Street Corridor or opt out of a PUD and do a straight zoning. Is that something that I personally missed, or is that something that all of us missed at the time of passage of the Bridge Street Corridor?
I think the point of confusion probably was that we were using PUD as an example, but the code itself says that you could just request a rezoning. Because we didn't say it had to be rezoning to a PUD. We only set, put it in the code at council's request that you could opt out and get a rezoning to another district.
So theoretically, anybody who inside the Bridge Street Corridor can really come to staff and say, you know what? I don't really want to go through the Bridge Street Corridor. I really don't want to do a PUD, I'll just do straight zoning.
They can request it, whether or not they get it is another issue because it has to come through you, you and Planning and Zoning Commission.
It has to come through us, okay. But still, it's out there, it's something people may be thinking about, kind of shopping, if you will, as to which way they want to go.
Well, I'm sure they probably will. But part of that's going to be some discussion with us as to what the viability of that rezoning would be. This one, we felt was a pretty unique circumstance of reasons Steve mentioned in terms of the surrounding development and the pattern where it was and its particular location in relationship to Wendy's. But we, I don't expect this to be a commonality.
Well, nor do I. And frankly, I think we've spent an awful lot of money on this Bridge Street Corridor, and I think this is a slippery slope. It really, truly is. And.
Well, it's one we're aware of.
Yeah, well.
And the other part I think we haven't mentioned is, at some point in the future, some future council could elect to rezone the property back into the Bridge Street District once Wendy's afford to vacate as well. That's still an option the city would have.
Well, I think at some point, because I think as we go through this Bridge Street Corridor code and applicants come before us, I really think we're going to have to look at some of these things. And we may consider to revising this code, maybe hopefully sooner than later. Because I see this as a blatant hole in that whole code. And I'm not too happy about that. But, you know, I recognize that the city has, we very much welcome Wendy's back. We were certainly contributing to their, we're investing with them as well. I would just like to see something in the development agreement that says that's, I won't make very sure that when this ceases to operate as a Wendy's restaurant, that it does go back through, the next occupant of that property has to come through the Planning and Zoning Commission process.
That's exactly the way we put it.
And I would like the language to be that much. I would think as much as we are contributing to Wendy's, the least they can do is contribute back and put that in the development agreement.
I actually. I think we have it in there. Let me, let me read you the clause that I couldn't find, I'm sorry, Rick.
It's on the second page.
I know, I just want to get this on the record.
As a result, once the Wendy's restaurant is constructed, no new structure shall be erected unless the property owner obtains final development plan approval pursuant to sections one fifty-three, oh five three E and one fifty-three, oh five G of the Dublin Codified Ordinances.
That's the PUD.
That's PUD. It does not apply, it does not apply to modifications of a Wendy's store. They're saying nothing else can go there without that happening. I'm sorry, I couldn't find it when you.
Right, okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hill, did you have something you wanted to add or to that comment?
No, I think the question got answered, but we're perfectly fine with that language in the document.
Okay, all right. Other questions or comments?
That's all.
Just in looking through the record, having not been here at the last meeting, looking through the minutes of this meet, or the council meeting and the planning commission meeting and hearing the discussion, and I talked with Mr. Smith today, it seems to me that the record that has been built, Rick's comments, the nature of the development agreement suggests that it is a complete anomaly. And it is something that is extraordinary, it is pertinent, or, you know, something that we're even considering on any level because of Wendy's and because of who they are to our community and the fact that, as Rick mentioned, you know, we are all invested together and that this, you know, sort of is a perfect storm of timing. We just get the Bridge Street Corridor approved, Wendy's comes back, we want them to come back, we want them to have this facility. And so this all sort of happened in the order that it happened. And so it necessitates the development agreement. And I think certainly the record has been built. And, you know, my support of this is, you know, completely and only because of the fact that it is Wendy's and our relationship with Wendy's and the fact that, you know, you're correct, we did spend an awful lot of time and money and, you know, think of all the energy that we've invested into the Bridge Street Corridor. And certainly, this is by no means, you know, putting that aside or encouraging any future applicant to do anything other than come through the Bridge Street Corridor. Because I think that's what, that's our intent.
Any other comment, questions? I wasn't surprised by your comment regarding how quickly you could construct in light of the fact of what you did on Bethel Road, which I think was about thirty days. Is that right?
Well, that was actually a remodel of an existing structure.
Oh, is that a remodel? I thought that went down to the ground.
Yeah, well, we took, some of the walls came down because we took off the front of the building. But this is a construction of a brand-new building. All the infrastructure, the utilities. It is typically about a hundred and twenty days, sometimes a little bit more, to construct a brand-new facility. The remodel of our facilities are about half that time. Bethel Road was probably at least sixty days.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, we look forward to it. And I hope we're all standing out there at the grand opening. And with a little treat in our hands or whatever.
Will be. We can guarantee that.
We look forward to it. Not that we like Frosties, I'm just saying. Anyway.
We wrote it down.
We appreciate it. I think we've about got it covered, then? Anything else?
Nothing else.
Okay. Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mauer, did you have a comment you'd like to make?
Maybe this has been answered. The city engineer would be interested in my first comment, namely that I've been building a road here in Dublin during this past week. And it is a road which is paved by good intentions and going straight to hell. That is, I had the intentions of tucking this over the past week, but I had so much catch-up to do as a result of my illness that I didn't get to it. This may have been answered. Suppose. Suppose you have, suppose there's owner X of a business well within the Bridge Street corridor, and somebody comes through town, comes over to his place, he sees it, and he's suddenly sees a chance for his executing the American dream right on this spot, and he is, talks it up with owner X, and the visitor says, here, I'll give you $500,000 on the spot, take it or leave it. Owner X will have a moral problem, because he's probably noticed in the telling of the dream that he's going to run at the, this visitor's going to run into trouble, so there's a moral problem whether he should tell him about this first, or take the money and run. Now, it's conceivable, is it not, maybe you've run into enough of this to know how to handle it, it's conceivable that somebody in the corridor does want to get out, would the same procedures which you've taken with respect to Wendy's be applied here? My question clear? It, it looks to me as if the, let me make, let me mark here, I have nothing against Wendy's at all, and I'd be happy to go there, but what if owners do want to get out of it, and they've got the precedent for it, or it seems to be the precedent for it, and is this the floodgates that somebody on the commission, on the zoning commission was referring to that might open up here, and that you'd lose your footing on?
Well, I think that Mr. Langworthy answered that question, but if you want to repeat it, or-
Again, this was a fairly unique physical location for this property, but the other aspect of it is, is any time anyone comes in to speak with us about their zoning options, we do go through all the options with them about what they, what they can opt or opt not to do, opt not to do, but, so we try to inform them as to what their choices are. So any applicant gets the same consideration as to what choices they may, may want to go through. We will often give them the pros and cons of each of those choices, and it may be different for each applicant about which choice is best for them.
Have there been any?
Pardon?
Have there been any applicants?
Sure, yeah, we've had numerous ones, and no one so far has, other than us, has opted to ask us to go out.
So far that you've, they've not been able to opt out?
Correct, we've got, we've processed probably, I don't know, 15 or 20 different applications through, and they've all been inside the corridor.
Okay.
Inside the code, I should say.
All right, so you, you might have your hands full for a long time.
We hope so.
I haven't heard from any of them, but I can see the possibilities here.
When we're talking about a rezoning, though, Steve, don't we have, as a, as a city, very, very broad discretion in terms of what we will allow and what we will not allow, and so the floodgates that could open would open by our choosing, not by the applicant's choosing?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, so we're in control-
That's, that's correct.
-of our process, and what happens with applicants?
Thanks, Mr. Mauer.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you call for the vote, please?
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Mayor Leclerc?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mrs. Sporing? Yes. Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Genesi Zerker?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Moving on to our first reading of ordinances, ordinance 66, page 12.
Modifying Sections 153.002 and 153.078 through 153.083 of the Dublin Code of Ordinances to address hedges in the fence code.
Introduction, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
Jeanne Martin's going to present this, but I, I wanted to make a comment first before she comes up, before she starts. Jeanne has resigned from the City of Dublin after 12 and a half years with us. We're going to miss her a great deal, she's been a great asset to us, both in landscape architecture and the planning side. She's been running ARB for two or three years now, and has been doing a great job with that, but she's going out on her own, and doing her own business, and she's going to be an entrepreneur, and we wish her all the best of luck, and we know we're all going to miss her.
Go ahead.
I'm going to have a hard time with this, so. Good evening, I'm here to present the amendment to zoning code for the fence code as it relates to hedges. Give a little bit of background. Back in 2000, there was an extensive revision of the fence code at the same time that there was for accessory structures, which ended up restricting the location of fences to the buildable areas of each lot. Then in 2012, 2012, at the July 2nd council meeting, council had directed planning to prepare some appropriate legislation to amend the zoning code as it relates to hedges and landscaping as fence codes. So as planning understood council's direction, we did an extensive review of the zoning code, and have recommended removing any references to hedges, shrubs, shrubbery, anything like that within the actual fence code, as far, and just with fences or walls from, from the sections of the fence code, as well as relocating the definition of hedges to just the general definitions, and the reason being is that the landscape code does address hedges as it relates to property perimeter requirements, vehicular use screening, so there's other areas where it does need to be preserved. So as such, we went before the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, or Planning and Zoning Commission, and the commission had recommended disapproval of the proposed amendment, they felt that what has been written has been effective and did not require the proposed modification, however, planning is before council tonight again recommending for approval of the proposed modification as it was our understanding of your direction, so we're proposing approval at the November 5th council meeting. Do you have any questions?
I suspect there might be. Let me start, I guess. I, I just, I'm a little confused by the, the blue that's marked out, and at the, at the risk of sounding foolish, in case it's obvious, but when I see under Section 153.079 in definitions, in the definition of fence, and, and where it says, "Hedges retaining walls or radio-controlled fences shall not be included within the definition of the word fence," and then, and then below that, in A, "Hedge is stricken," I don't-
Correct, this is what you have before you, as far as the proposed changes in blue, which means the strikeout in blue is what will be removed from the zoning code. So the definitions you see here is pertinent to just the fence code section, so it's going to be removed from this area where it says, where it defines what a fence is, and just be put into the general descriptions for the zoning code. So it's just moving from one section to another, so that we're still able to identify it, but it's not solely just within the fence code section.
So it's not a fence anymore, so it's being removed?
Correct, it was not a fence. That should be in there, and if not, we'll make sure that it is included within-
It's 153.1-
.079?
No.
Where it's being moved to?
Where to go to, yeah.
I'm sorry.
It goes, it, 153.002, the general definitions. I think after all these years, I remember all these code numbers, but no.
I still find it.
I believe it is not in here, but that's where it would be, we'll make sure that we can get that addressed in, for the November 5th.
I have a decision that where we can't find it.
Well, I led off, go ahead. John, you want to say something?
The, the prohibited fencing, I see we're, I'm glad we're against the vinyl-clad plastic or PVC polycarbonate, but I just want to bring to the attention of the staff that there's a new product out that should not be prohibited, it's called Cellar Vinyl, and you can carve it, cut it, it looks like wood, it's obviously what they're trimming out houses now, so they don't rot any longer, and now that product line is made and everything from arbers to pergolas to window boxes, so they now last as long as the house, so we don't want to exclude that product line, so I'd like to see that included.
Yes, sir.
John, I can speak to that, we've used it on a property down south, and it, it does, it's like wood, it, we've used it for trim out, because things rot so readily down in the, in that climate.
Yeah, carpenters can't really tell sometimes when they're working with this, until they start drilling into it, that it's really not wood, and the better companies actually bake the finish on for like 25 years, so there's like zero maintenance.
Okay, we'll be sure to add that in.
Thank you.
Anything else, John?
That's it.
Any other questions or comments of Ms. Martin? Cathy?
Would that not be included in the permanent material?
As far as what Mr. Reiner was speaking to?
Yes.
We would probably have that underneath, as far as permitted material, yes.
Because it looks like it could be. I kind of agree with planning and zoning in part, because, and I know you all thought direction was to get rid of all of it, and my idea was not to get rid of all of it, but to consider everything that we do, like the screening, or what, you know, screening here and there, I am concerned that, you know, we start messing with the view, but I've got, I'm kind of like this, the view shed versus the privacy or whatever, but I am concerned about the idea of a whole tree row and totally enclosing a property with tall permanently, I guess you say, not permanently, evergreens or things like that, so I was hoping there would be a balance in there, and I don't know how you achieve that, but I'm not on board with, with the way, dropping everything as it is now.
You know, Cathy, I feel the same way, I thought when we gave direction, we were going to not only clean up the, the fence code, but also talk about these hedges in some areas that in effect have become fences, so, you know, I see a part of it, but I don't see the other part of what I thought we talked about, we didn't have a vote at, at City Council on this, we just gave you direction, so maybe you didn't hear some of us talk at that time, but, you know, and the part I agree with the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think we need to go a little bit more in depth, and talk about these, these plannings that become in effect a, a fence, we may have a few, and, and I'm not against landscaping in backyards, I think that's, you know, a good thing, but we also have a, a strong policy in a lot of these neighborhoods of view sheds, open space, and there seems to be, we need to create some kind of fair balance for, for the expectation of the entire neighborhood, and also the expectations of, of the individual property owner that wants to landscape their backyard, that sort of thing, so this doesn't quite get, get to where I thought it would, we would go with it.
Okay, again, we're reaching, looking for feedback on what, what you had understood, so appreciate it, thank you.
You know, on that idea, the, I think how you might term that is like the cone of vision, or the triangle that views into the common ground, the very case that brought all this here, I went out and looked at today, and I can tell you that, once I saw it, the person who was accused of building a screen probably added about $10,000 value to their property and the neighboring property, because they screened out two abutting houses that just viewed back-to-back into each other, and it wasn't like there was a limited number of feet from the back of the house to the screen, there was a huge number of feet, so it wasn't like you were in a total enclosure. So I think how you might want to word that is, and I think people have a right to privacy, both on the left and right-hand side of their patios, and I think they try to achieve that, and I think that's what also adds real estate value, and I think any Realtor will tell you that, that's where your value comes from, now how well your house is landscaped and screened, so what Rick is referring to, I think, is more like the, the cones of vision, where you're viewing down the common, into a common area that's still green and continuous, that adds value to your property, but as far as people trying to create privacy, I see that as a great value to their homes, especially, and I, and we went around and around in this in the committee, and I think part of the problem is really how the developers zone in these properties, where you end up having, I've counted as many as 18 neighbors looking in your backyard, and talk about living in a fishbowl, so I think part of this really has to come from the plating part, when these subdivisions are submitted, how well they're laid out, we had a very extensive discussion about putting them on a radiating cul-de-sac, so at least the, each homeowner doesn't have to buy the proper, the plantings, the screenings on either side of their patio, just to get the basic privacy, so they're not looking sideways to each neighbor on their patio, so I think part of this has to be resolved in the plating process, and that's where a lot of it will be taken care of, because unfortunately for a lot of these homeowners, they're, they're sitting, as I said, in a fishbowl with everybody looking at them, and they do have some right to privacy.
Well, the curious thing is, and it's mentioned in here, that the intent of the code was to provide clear, open, green space and view space in the neighborhoods, and I've come to appreciate that a little more when I go in other neighborhoods, not in our city. If, if we're going to allow this kind of thing for privacy, then why do we have a fence code? I mean, if you're going to have something that thick, why not allow a privacy fence to go higher, like around your patio or something like that? What are we trying to get toward? Are we going to, you know, hit this green space? And then we have deed restrictions, and people usually don't enforce those kind of things, so, and that's what I said about a balance, because if you're going to allow people to put up these solid green barriers, so to speak, and I'm not totally getting that in the right place, but like I said, the balance, then what's, why do we prevent a private screening around the patio, if we're talking about privacy, if the last thing is privacy? I guess I would have to ask that question.
I guess when I was looking at this, Cathy, to answer your question, for me, it was the, it was all about the material. As John said, I think that everybody has the right to screen their own yard from, you know, the eyes of all of their neighbors, and the fact is, if you drive around our community and look, almost every home has some form of screening, a lot of homes, any neighborhood, drive-through, your view shed is interrupted by people's landscaping, and it's beautiful, and it adds value to the neighborhood, it, you know, I, you know, don't want to look at my neighbor's patio any more than they want to look at mine, so we both have, you know, lock hedges and, you know, different things built up between us, it's not that we don't like each other, it's just we want to sit on our patio and feel like we're, you know, in an outdoor room versus being, you know, exposed, and if you, you know, we chose our lot so that we had some privacy behind us, but when you look, you know, at our neighbors across the street, there's, you know, every, almost everyone in our neighborhood, and it's now almost 20 years old, has taken some step to screen their property, and some of them, you know, it is a row of evergreens, some of them, you know, different deciduous trees, whatever, my point is, I guess, is this is happening in our community, it has happened, despite the fence code, people choose to put landscaping in place for purposes of enhancement and privacy, and I don't know how you go back and try to regulate that, because 90% of the homes are going to be in violation if you say that it's a fence. So that, for me, it was like, well, you know, this is what's happening in the community, we have established our own standard in terms of, of fencing and hedges, and where people are not allowed to build tall privacy fences, they put hedges in because they still desire the privacy.
Well, and I, I agree with you part, because certainly the buffering and, and the screening, we all probably have that in our own yards, but there are, I was just hoping we could have a balance where we don't get into something that is total solemnness in one way or another. I think there's a, a fine line and balance.
You know, what Amy's saying is, is absolutely true, I think, but what also happens for the homeowner that plans this out correctly, they might create those little blocks of screening between them and a, a neighbor that's directly across from them, or- from them or two side patios. But at the same time, if they think about this correctly, it actually goes back to the open space part of the code because that's where there's long views sometimes, green views between these units that are really kept open. And those are, you know, when you're doing this professionally, those are the kind of things you do for an enhancement. At the same time, you establish privacy for the resident. So it's actually a combination of those two concepts that makes this really work out. But I don't think we've had any real problem. And I did, as I said, went back to the original test case for this and looked at that property. And I can only say that the people that were accused of creating a barrier probably created a major asset to both parties from what I could see. And so, but I think prudent people generally don't build hedges all the way around their property. They, they try to stay with our open space concept and, and I think we've done well with that, so.
Let me ask you this question. Uh, if we take it out of the fence code, could I put evergreens on the front, right by the sidewalk?
Along the, the front of your sidewalk? Um, in theory, yes, you could. The way that, um, and here's, there's some sections, there's some developments within the city of Dublin where we do encourage to have hedges that are used instead of a fence forward. Now granted, those are planned unit developments, but in this particular case, that is being used in that, in that style. We do have some, uh, one part of the standard zoning districts, I'm trying to remember which one it is, but it has a provision for putting in a fence around a daycare, but then you're to screen the fence with another hedge, which would be an effectively doing a head, doing a fence and another fence if we keep it as, uh, within the fence code. So that, that's what I mean by when we started to look at how it was actually written, what was the least disruptive way of being able to address this. In addition, we look at, we had lots of discussions, you remember a couple of years back, 2008, I guess, about no build, no disturb zones and where we have preserved tree rows. If you go and augment that, in some respects, that could be determined as, as a fence if you connect up to it. So it's, it has a ripple effect and which is why we were going with the least disruptive and trying to look for some additional guidance from, from council.
You know, part of your, your problem too is you're sort of moving from a, you're trying to define a structure, which is really an art, as you know, as a landscape architect. So if you're moving into the backyard, you would select cones of vision that would enhance the property and then you'd create, create screening areas that would negate things like telephone poles or sheds or other things, so.
Almost seems like we're.
It's almost something you can't legislate exactly, I don't think.
We're trying to.
So, I mean, you know.
The idea that in 20, how many years of this fence code? We've had it for 12 years. We've had exactly one complaint.
Yeah, that's right.
One individual came before us and said, my neighbor is over screening their property.
We're trying to seek a solution to a non-existent problem and it's very difficult to legislate common sense, which is kind of what.
Well, I think.
Absolutely right.
If you can put a row of evergreens right by the sidewalk, which this permits, then I've got problems with that. And don't tell me people aren't going to do it. If you, don't tell me when you vow it anywhere, people aren't eventually going to do it.
I think what Jeannie's referring to though, if you have a zero lot line type of product, you would want privacy. Also, there's probably nothing wrong with defining your front yard as it used to do in the Victorian days with something like a dwarf hedge of, a dwarf style, um, lilac that might be two or three feet tall and you put a gate in there. You know, you really add a lot to the neighborhood. So I mean, if you have some creative people or homeowners that really care and you have variations to that too, like, like we said, there's going to be other kinds of zonings where you're going to really want that kind of privacy because it's just the way that units are stacked up on each other and the density of the units. And I think Weatherstone's probably a good example of that, where you had a California style architecture come in with stone walls and hedges and even some fences to make those small spaces doable with that kind of, I don't know what that was per square acre, but it was very highly.
How are you going to prevent someone planting a 10 foot tree as a solid barrier in front of the house by the sidewalk? You're talking about creativity. You're talking, you're from a landscape background. You're talking creativity and things that look decent, you know? I don't have that vision.
Well, you know, I gotta say what Amy said, and I said this to the, to the resident, actually in the 40 years I've been in this government, we've had one case of it. And actually now that I've seen that case, there really wasn't a case. So we have technically, as far as I'm concerned as a landscape architect, I see zero cases in 40 years where people have done something crazily foolish and just do what you're, you're saying, Captain, plant a row of spruce trees around the front yard or something.
But it can happen and do you want, do you want that to be able to happen?
So are you saying that the current, the way it's currently written? It couldn't happen.
The way they've changed it?
No, I know. That's what I'm saying.
Right.
So you're saying if we leave it alone, then what you're suggesting couldn't happen?
Right.
No.
It has to.
No, no, I, Kathy, I think the way it's written now, in fact, didn't staff issue a complaint to the property owner based on what we have today?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So to go to the end that you were talking about, Kathy, you'd leave the ordinance the way that it is now?
No, isn't there some way you can reg, like I said, there's a balance. Isn't there some way you can regulate where these screenings must be with the hedges? Is there not some way you can say in the, you can't plant 10 feet tall hedges in the front of the yard? You can't say that?
Let me make it more difficult. I used to live in Weatherstone. My neighbor had 10 foot hedges and an iron fence in front of his house. And I had bushes in part in front of my house because we had a very little yard. I'm sitting here listening to this and I'm thinking about enforcement. And if you drive, I mean, I, I can't imagine trying to enforce something like this. Could somebody plant three large trees in her front yard as a spite fence? I suppose they could, Kathy. But, you know, first of all, they'd probably die because there wouldn't be enough room for growth, but, uh, there's a lot of, the reason we started screwing with this is because somebody issued a complaint based on how it was written.
Right.
And it is the first complaint that we've gotten since we did this. Could there be another one? I don't think the complaint was going anywhere because I don't think we would have prosecuted it to be perfectly candid with you. But it raised the issue for you all to look at. But there's this whole other legal enforcement of it and this standard that you would try to write for all the different kinds of neighborhood. Drive down Murfield, everybody that lives that backs on the Murfield Drive has, has a green hedge or a green trees or a green something, so you can't see their houses.
A living fence.
A living, well, a living, whatever.
And a living fence has become a community standard.
There's other areas where there are view sheds, um, you know, and it's just so, I mean, I.
And Steve, I don't know how you would write it either, but, um, but it seems like there might be something we can do because consistent with a lot of the, uh, the neighborhoods that we have, that have gone through the planning zoning process over the last, you know, 10 years, uh, we would define the billable area where a fence could be, where, uh, where you could do some things. And then the back, we wanted to keep open.
Well, that's why we put the no.
Free of, free of swing seats.
That's why we put the no build zones, the no build zones and no, you know. Well, staff's going to get a couple of weeks to look at this and we're going to give them our input too, so.
I mean, you know, like John said, there's a balance. I mean, if you want to landscape, but maybe there's a better way to balance and that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, well, we'll look at it.
If there is, rate it, there isn't.
We'll look at it. I just think, I'm thinking of the enforcement and then I'm also thinking when you plan it, you may plan it that it looks just right, okay? And then 15 years from now or five years from now, whatever. I understand. Okay, thank you.
Well, go ahead, Mike.
I was just going to ask Jeannie who she's going to ladder all this assignment to.
Steve?
Yes.
She's not allowed to leave under contract.
I, I just want to make a, a few comments and observations. You know, in all the years that I served on planning and zoning and I've served on council, um, you know, insofar as we've had discussions regarding view sheds, I've always considered that in the context of fences. I'm, I'm talking about fences, not vegetation, you know, but, um, iron fences, wood fences and so forth. And, um, you know, I, I viewed it in, in that respect and, you know, those kinds of fences interrupting the view shed. And I happen to live in this neighborhood and so when I moved into this neighborhood 20 years ago, you know, and, and, you know, that, that was a, a very strong consideration, you know, that I would never see the stockade effect, you know, that you see in other municipalities, but not in terms of vegetation. Now, 20 years ago, I could stand at the end of my street. I live on a corner lot and I, there are probably 10 homes on the street and, you know, you want to talk about a view shed, I could see through every neighbor's backyard. I could see every utility box, you know, I could see everything. It's 20 years later, people have planted trees, people have planted vegetation and so forth, and it's far more appealing today than it was 20 years ago because of the vegetation, because of the various forms of screening that exist. You know, we talk about, you know, these fence rows with trees and so forth. You know, again, uh, where I live to the west, you know, we worked very hard at preserving those. Is, is that an interruption of a view shed? I mean, you know, because I can't see a soybean field or a cornfield or, or heaven forbid what's going to be on that, you know, someday, which may not be so appealing. You know, it, there's a cul-de-sac at the end of my street, four houses down, acres and acres of woods in Avery Park. I mean, I suppose you could say that interrupts my view shed. I, I, I like the trees. I want to see the trees. So, um, you know, I, I like how things, you know, have evolved and so forth and, you know, in, in terms of enforcement, it seems as though this is going to be complaint driven, you know, because certainly, you know, city staff's not going to drive around the city, you know, and start tagging people's trees. You know, so then, you know, it's, it's going to be arbitrary, you know? And, you know, what neighbor doesn't like the other neighbor's landscaping treatment? And I don't want to go down that path. You know, but there is, there is so much screening and, and, you know, I'm sure arguably justifiable, uh, you know, to each and every homeowner, you know, who has installed that screening. You know, would, would I, um, you know, have, have done, uh, you know, installed the planning that, that this particular individual did? No, I, you know, I wouldn't. You know, but in terms of a view shed, I don't know who's, who's view shed's interrupted. I mean, somebody's, several homes removed is who I'd expect to hear the complaint from, you know, that their view shed, you know, is, is potentially interrupted. So, uh, you know, I think in, in our previous discussion, John had pointed out, and, and John, you know, correct me if, if I'm, I'm not recounting this correctly, but, uh, you know, that it would be impractical for people to submit, you know, their landscape plans for review and so forth. And, you know, I'm not sure that we want to go down that path either. So, uh, you know, I, I, I just, I don't, I don't have the, the same issue, uh, you know, with respect to, you know, perceived interruption of, of view sheds. I, I also, there were a couple of things in the record, excuse me. The Wyndham Village doesn't have a forced and funded homeowners association. I don't know if there was some perception that there was. I think that there was a resident that commented, you know, that it, you know, uh, it wasn't enforced, whatever, as long as she's lived in the neighborhood, that it's not forced and funded. You know, so that's not a particular issue here. Another thing that, that I, I have to say that I took issue with, and I, I want to give the benefit of the doubt to the planning and zoning commission and in particular, Mr. Taylor. But I, I, I have to say, you know, and, and I, I don't know what is the right word to describe my reaction to this, but I, I, I think it was Mr. Taylor who at least minutes reflect, uh, you know, that it was, it, it appeared to me that it was his direction of staff, you know, that the issue should be addressed via chainsaw. And I, I frankly, you know, the planning and zoning commission, generally speaking, makes recommendations to council. They don't give direction to staff. And, you know, I thought that was inappropriate. Again, I want to give this particular commissioner the benefit of the doubt, but, um, uh, you know, I think, and, and, you know, the chairman echoed that Mr. Taylor had asked that code enforcement get back on the job. You know, that's direction to be given by the city manager. You know, certainly the planning and zoning commission can make recommendations to staff or I'm sorry, to the, to the council, council in turn, you know, can give direction to the city manager. So, any other comment?
Mr. Ziegler, you signed up to speak? If you'd like to come forward.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight. I just want to voice my support for retaining the current fencing code where trees and other living materials can be fences. When we moved to Dublin 19 years ago, what drew us to our house in our neighborhood, which is Wyndham Village, was the open spaces that, and in particular, there were a lot of no build zones in the back of the property. So it was going to keep things nice and open. And yes, you were talking about, you used to be able to look right down and see everything and people have been planting, planting trees to give some screening. And the current recommend, or the current interpretation that was given to us by then city manager Jane Brodegum and Mr. Langworthy was that you could have screening and, but once it got to be 50% opacity, then it was going to be a problem. So it's not like right now, you can't have any screening. You can have screening, but what, what's apparent now, what's, what's abutting up to our property, it's 100% opacity and it's going to keep growing. Those trees are going to get to 30 to 50 feet tall. So whose view shed is, is affected? Well, we look right out our back door and we're going to see nothing but 50 feet tall, solid row of trees. So that's, that's what's going to be affected by that. P and Z voted seven, nothing, that they felt that this was something that should still be kept in, in play. Perhaps, you know, they recommended maybe having some kind of adjustments for different heights or opacities or, you know, various things, suggestions to write into the code to make it a little more flexible and a little more manageable for people. And so I guess, you know, you can have screening without saying there are no restrictions. You can have restrictions, still have the screening to give people the privacy that, that they want. So that's all I have.
I suggest, you know, Jeannie, when you look at this, and I, you know, one thing I, I think what you want to think about is there is certain times when you want 100% opacity in, in blocks because you're looking at something that's so unattractive that it devalues your own home. You know, it could be telephone poles or sheds or maybe your neighbor's unkempt property in the trash back there and.
Oh, sure, you live on a corner lot and you need that block, but this is.
But, yeah, so, you know, so what you said there in opacity, I think maybe, you know, you want to rethink that term because there's times when you want 100% opacity in a block and a screen.
True, there are, granted, there are times, but I guess I don't feel that this particular time, it's a, a house in the middle of a block. There's nothing, I don't believe our house is that ugly and need to screen it. It, this does not seem like one of those cases where 100% opacity really makes sense.
Mr. Ziegler, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Because I do live in the neighborhood and, and so, you know, the design of the homes is similar. Do I hear you saying then that, that because virtually directly behind your home is this property in question, am I right?
Correct.
So you want to see the back of his house? Is that what you're saying?
It's not that we want to. You can have some screening without that solid wall. You can have privacy, you can have screening without every inch of the backyard being taken up and the, the perimeter with, with solid trees. So the, like Mr. Reiner was saying, you can have trees placed in certain ways to block certain views, but it doesn't have to be a, a straight line of trees. At least that's my interpretation of what you were saying.
Yeah, but, you know, in, in the case you're mentioning, um, the central part of that blockage really is probably helping both of you because you're both lined up looking at each other's rear property and I don't know, I don't know what Tim mentioned the mayor is, you know, you really want to stare at your neighbor's backyard, his windows, his patio and does he want to. and does he want to stare at yours? I mean, is there a point where the screening becomes an enhancement and adds value to your property?
I guess my opinion is no, and that's why we're here.
You'd rather see the architecture than the trees, eh?
Well, you know, some trees...
That's a point.
It, it's okay. It was the way it was for probably fifteen years before the trees went in. Fourteen years, and it was not a problem.
I think that's a little bit of the challenge that we were facing when you first came in, really, is that, of course, because you have lived there a significant time, and the view shed had been, remained pretty steady, the same, you know? I mean, you might have some smaller trees like you're talking about, but from his view, um, he's not looking down the line that you're looking down, he was looking across the backyard. Um, and so it's, it, it is a dramatic change from what he had been accustomed to for an extended time period. Um, I always felt the issue, and I could be wrong, but I've spent some time, you know, with you and your wife and walking your house area and all, that it's, uh, and I don't know that we need a code to get at this, because unfortunately, it's like Kathy or John are saying, it is a matter of personal taste probably, and if you really are working with a landscaper, or if you're just having chewies delivered and put in, you know, kind of thing. But, uh, I think that it was the, the, the trees, if I recall correctly, were, and John, you were just there, that they were all just, uh, equally placed, as opposed to staggering them, which would still, uh, you would still have, uh, privacy. Um, but the look would have been, you know, substantially different had that been the way they were set up, because aren't they set up all across, you know? Um, now, you know, is it right or wrong, or, you know, it's a matter, probably, to some degree in the eye of the beholder in terms of what, uh, what kind of a look you're looking for, uh, to, uh, landscape your property with. Um, I don't think it's, uh, you know, we've spent quite a bit of time on this, uh, not just tonight, but a lot of nights, and we don't seem to be able to come up with the right wording to, uh, allow citizens to landscape their property effectively, but not provide, uh, not develop, uh, some kind of significant barriers. Uh, it seems to be more oriented to this kind of a development, because when you really drive around and see larger properties, you will often see that they are very much, um, almost barricaded is too strong of a word, because I don't see it that way, they're, you know, they're Christmas trees and all different things, so you don't have that sense. But they are all on, on three quarter, you know, three sides of the property. So, it's, a lot of it has to do with where your property's located, and the sense that you have because of that, uh, the, the layout of the plating, like you were talking about, that it's really, from the beginning of, we need to pay more attention in the future to, uh, to that element, when we're, uh, green, to, uh, the layout of property. You know, we can't do much about the current ones we've already approved, seventy percent of the city, so.
And, and I will have to admit, as much as I am concerned, um, because I would not like to see it in my neighborhood, the biggest problem is the enforcement. And if you plant small trees that look okay, and then you allow them to get to where they don't look okay, uh, I don't think one of us would say, "Go tell that person to chop them down." I think that becomes a real consideration. I just, I wish we could modify in some way, but the, um, you know, something that becomes obvious, we can get to, but the enforcement, I see, is a, a extreme problem.
I mean, Mary Lee, I appreciate what you're saying, um, and, and this is one of those, um, instances where I think beauty or whatever, or not, is in the eye of the beholder. I mean, you know, my lot sort of straddles two lots, and, and frankly, if they put a solid row of evergreens, I'd be happy with that. I hope they're not watching, um, but we all have similar homes. You know, the back of their homes are just not that attractive. And, you know, a, a solid evergreen, you know, in my view, you know, row of evergreens would be more appealing, you know, to look at, you know, than the architecture of the back of these homes. And again, I, I live in the same kind of home, so, you know, that's just, that's just my view. Um, you know, so, uh, I do appreciate what you're saying.
Can I ask a question? Because I was not on council, um, or the planning commission when the fence code was approved. For those of you who were, at one point, the city standard was that evergreens, landscaping, whatever, hedges, color away you want, that was considered a fence, along with, you know, the, the permitted fences in the buildable area and all, all the definitions. Everyone worked really hard on that. I could never really get on board with the idea that landscaping was fencing. Um, and, and interrupting of the view shed, I thought it, you know, I think of landscaping and planted material, green material, as, um, you know, a hallmark of our community and an enhancement, as, you know, as you said, when you look up and down your, um, your view shed, seeing landscaping is not a bad thing. I could never understand why we were talking about landscaping as we were about wooden, wrought iron, whatever fences. It seems to me to be two separate things, but at one point, it was considered the same thing. So I'm wondering, um, you know, what were we thinking back then? If somebody could, you know, kind of, kind of explain it to me? I don't, um, because what he's talking about is interruption of his view shed as if someone, you know, had a stockade fence, but now, you know, I, I thought we were all on board with, we don't want landscaping to be included, because if you look around the community, if you look around the standard, I mean, I remember planning brought forth slides, um, and it was, um, photo after photo after photo of different neighborhoods. And it was all landscaping acting like fences, and we realized, oh, this is the community standard, this is what everyone is doing with their yard. We shouldn't say that this is a problem, because then we've got a huger problem of enforcement. How in the world are we going to go around everyone and say, um, you know, as, as one of the commissioners suggested, suggested that, you know, we need to solve this with the chainsaw? I, I, I'm completely in disagreement with that, and it seems to me that, um, you know, we, we have a community standard, like it or not, um, people want to be able to screen their yards. And I don't know that if, you know, if you were talking about thirty foot, a thirty-foot row of evergreens, if staggering them a little bit is really going to change the effect. Um, you know, it, it's effect is going to be that it's going to provide complete opacity and privacy for the yards in question. And I don't personally think that's a bad thing. Um, I think it enhances the neighborhoods, and I think that, you know, a fence is a fence, a wooden fence, whatever you want to describe it here, for me, that's a fence. Plantings are not fences, and we shouldn't try to regulate them, because you're really overstepping, I think, you know, the role of government, and I'm not usually one to say that, because we are, um, we are all about regulations, but, and I just can't see trying to regulate and enforce calling landscaping fences, and, and at what point, you know, you're defining fences in terms of planting, it really makes me nervous. I don't want to go there.
That's a hugely subjective thing, is the problem.
Way more suggestive, subjective than, you know, this is the buildable area of your lot. You may fence this for your pet or for your children with a wooden fence, or with a wrought iron fence, whatever. That is something that is regulatable. Um, the idea that we can tell people where they can and can't plant bushes, and then, you know, today they're one thing, and then in five years, they're something else, and in ten years, something altogether different.
Well, what could happen to this case, Mr. Ziegler's case, is the neighbor could move, they remove the evergreen hedge, and the next resident comes in and absolutely keeps a horrific backyard. It might have trampolines in it, play equipment of all kinds of colors and disrepair. His trash cans back there, tons of junk, and his house goes down in value. Because whenever he tries to sell it, someone looks out, looks at that house, and, "Good God, I don't want this guy as my neighbor."
Right.
So, you know, we, you see a lot of examples of that kind of thing, and that's why people actually implement this kind of screening, to protect their property values.
Mr. Ziegler, any last comment?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Jeannie?
Yes, sir.
I don't know how soon you're leaving.
November second.
Maybe it's tomorrow, but, uh...
Hope you gave us two weeks.
Now that's two weeks' notice, you were just kidding.
What, what, what do you or any other, uh, of staff take away from our conversation here? I mean, in terms of, uh, what you'll bring back to us?
I, I think, I'll speak up. I, I, I think it's almost impossible for me to write an ordinance that wouldn't be struck down for being void for vagueness. I can't write something that you can't enforce. And, and it's just, I'm just, it's just the way it is. Going forward, if you want to charge the Platts to, to have different view sheds and, and different no-build zones because of that, but I, I just don't know how you can, how I can write an ordinance. I'll challenge one of my young bright associates to this, but I don't think you can. It's like a law school question, Tim. I don't think I can write an ordinance that covers the moron of different type of fence in, I don't want to call them, of hedges and trees and all the different types of vegetation that, you know, John sees daily, that, I, I mean, I, there would, it'd be great if I could write a balance, but I don't think I can do it. I don't think I can write something that's enforceable.
So your suggestion is what you have before us as an enforceable alternative to our current fence code?
You know, the, the, the problem is, the reason that we, I mean, I think it was, uh, all of council said, you know, why are we filing a complaint on something that, um, and that's what started all this? You know, why, why did this resident get a complaint filed against him? When in fact, there had never been one, and it was driven by the fact that, that was interpreted, what was in there, that's what drove changing this. And, um, I, I think the obvious, easiest way to change this, so it doesn't happen again, is to get rid of the vegetation issue and view it as a fence issue. And whether it be the new material John suggested, or a wooden fence, or a, you know, this, or spite fences, which we know we can't build, where somebody builds a barricade. I'm, I'm, you know, I'll try to write whatever y'all, what, what majority of you want me to write, but I just don't think I can write something that's enforceable in this area. I think it's...
But as the staff proposed, um, or the staff proposed changes, you know, which, um, eliminate hedges...
As a fence.
...from the definition of fences, is, does that, you know, address the, the situation as best as possible?
Oh, I think it does, because there'll be nobody, there'll be, no, no staff here will be filing any complaint against anybody that has a hedge or a tree row, or an evergreen row, or bushes, or anything else that becomes a fence. And, you know, I, I, I appreciate the fact that it is in the eye of the beholder, but it's, I don't know how we, whatever, how you'd ever make that case if somebody took you, took you a challenge on it, to be candid with you.
I, I guess I would ask Kathy and, and Rick, you know, if that's acceptable to you. I mean, because you seem to raise questions with the proposed...
Thank you, no, but as I mentioned, the enforceability of it is a huge concern with me, and we, you know, once they get big, it's pretty difficult to say, "Take out your investment." My only, as I reiter, I'll reiterate, my only concern is if someone would take the opportunity to screen their entire house by putting a row of evergreens right in front, that would be my only concern at this point. I don't know if those are indeed restrictions, or how that works.
Probably are.
You know, um, I, you say that, and I just thought of a property, because I was thinking, man, I've seen this someplace. I, I don't, I think this is a township property, actually, but when you're going down Muirfield, uh, going north, and you're right at the roundabout, uh, here at Post Road, and, uh, it's the first house on the, um, east side of the street as you're going north from the roundabout. So, what they've done there is, in fact, developed a barricade. They've done multiple rows of different kind of trees. They've built up the whole side with stone and... For, yeah, ten years, you know? And he's got trees on top of that and everything. Um, so there is, you know, now, what he didn't do was he didn't put them all straight across. So he has layers of, two or three layers of, of trees. Uh, now, what in five years that's going to look like? Is this going to look like a forested lot? Because of, of the, you know, the work and the layout and everything, and the growth that will ultimately occur.
So we come back again to the idea of enforceability, because in places like Garth Lots, if you go down Bran Road, even this...
Right.
We come back to enforceability, and when I think of like a neighborhood like yours, it wouldn't work. But again, how do you say, "Well, if you have this lot, you can, and this lot, you can't"? So, um, now you're striking down my other objection. And I remember Steve's neighborhood, so, you know, it, it gets down to that bottom line for me, that, um, I'm fine.
Okay.
Anyone else last comment? I, I just want to go on record as saying I love my neighborhood. In case I left you with a different impression. So, okay, um, we will have the second reading, uh, November fifth. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Moving on to our resolutions, resolution sixty-one dash twelve.
Resolution intent to appropriate a zero-point-one-one-three acre with zero-point-zero-six acres. Presley Road occupied, more or less fee simple interest from the Asman Land Company Limited.
Thank you, introduction please. Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, as you know, staff has been undergoing the acquisition process for Emerald Phase Eight roadway project. After engaging in a lengthy, uh, period of negotiations with the grantor that's mentioned in the staff report and in the title, uh, we've temporarily come at impasse and, uh, will probably be forced to appropriate the needed property from the grantor. This resolution will enable us to do that. Staff recommends approval of the resolution, although, at the same time, I would just remind, uh, council that we will always remain in a posture of being willing to discuss and try to work this out with the grantor until the last possible minute, try to see if we can get this figured out. But we need, we need this tool to, to move forward, and feel it's appropriate to have this, uh, at, at this time. So we would appreciate your approval of this.
Great, thank you. Question or comment? Harry Knight, Ian, if you call for the vote, please.
Mrs. Zierker?
Yes.
Mrs. Sporing?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Luckleider?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next on our agenda is a request for a tree replacement fee waiver.
Getting our mileage out of Jeannie while she's around.
Good. Ms. Martin, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, back again. I'm here to present, um, a request from Master Maintenance located at sixty-two-hundred Wilcox Road. Uh, they're requesting a tree fee waiver for replacement trees of approximately ninety-seven caliper inches that were removed due to the, um, being in poor condition. Uh, I apologize, it's very dark, uh, but what has been replaced back on site, they're unable to accommodate additional ninety-seven caliper inches, so, uh, it would be a fee in lieu of replacement. Um, and, uh, again, the applicant's requesting for a waiver from this fee request, and, uh, planning is in support of this. Sorry that the picture's dark, but they have, uh, existing trees, or put in some new trees of fencing to meet the screening requirements.
And I'm looking out into the audience, I don't see a representative, uh, for the...
From Master Maintenance.
Property owner here this evening? Okay?
If I may?
Yes.
I have some comments regarding this. Um, first, I, um, would like to know, this, um, property has been a longtime, um, source of, um, consternation for, I know, the, um, code enforcement department and our legal department. Um, they have had a great deal of difficulty meeting our city code. Um, I know code enforcement has spent a lot of hours, as has our legal department. Steve, if you, um, could, I called Steve today and asked him if he could come up with...
We, it falls under our retainer, but this year, just one person at eight thousand dollars in time in it, and, because I didn't get a chance to do the search on the others, and it's been going on about two and a half years, so...
So eight thousand dollars this year alone?
For one person, but I did not have a chance to search, to people to search the other ones.
Okay, so there could have been multiple attorneys, so even more...
Yes, there was, there was one other attorney, but I didn't get it searched.
And, um, our code enforcement department has equally spent, um, you know, hours and hours with this property owner. Um, the site, particularly the south side of the building, is still in complete disrepair. It has weeds, missing siding, it is a construction site in progress, I guess, but it's been this way for years. They have just now, um, within the past couple of months, completed what they asked to do back in two thousand nine with their rezoning, but the south side is still not in compliance. Um, the original parking lot surface was purchased, interestingly enough, by an asphalt truck that was working in the area. The, um, paving company was driving by, the property owner was out there and said, "Hey, we know that we need to put a parking lot down." The city said that the gravel lot that we... The city said that the gravel lot that we have is not sufficient." And actually, um, got a deal on the asphalt and backed the truck up. Um, the asphalt company poured them a parking lot that was completely out of compliance, came up to, very close to the trees that were subsequently removed earlier this year. Um, the applicant, um, realized upon completion of that parking lot that they were out of compliance, because, and that that was in fact not legal for them to build a parking lot or construct their parking lot in this fashion, because Code Enforcement, um, you know, visited them and talked with them about this and brought about the rezoning action. Um, now I come to find out that those trees were taken down. I wasn't aware that they were taken down illegally. I would have assumed that this property owner would have known, if we're going to do anything like this in the rezoning process and so forth, I've got to assume these trees were a subject of conversation. But now we find out that there was an arborist that was driving by, and the property owner, again, enlisted the help, the help of a contractor driving by to take down these trees. They may have been in poor condition, but they were still, you know, ninety-seven inches of trees. They were, you know, valuable, um, in, per the definition of the code, and I am just, you know, beyond frustrated with this property owner. I can't believe that they have, um, honestly, the chutzpah to come before us and ask for a waiver, um, based on their history and the fact that we've already invested, you know, thousands of dollars and thousands of, hundreds of hours, thousands of dollars of taxpayer money, bringing them into compliance. They still aren't in compliance, and now they want a tree fee waiver. Um, I would like to make a motion that we deny this request based on the, my foregoing comments.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Ian, would you call for the vote?
Uh, Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mrs. Zirker.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Luck lighter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next item on our agenda is a right-of-way encroachment request and fee waiver request for a neighborhood entry feature. This is Ballantre, Sections One and Two. Oh, where did Jeannie go? No, I'm just kidding.
I'm correct. I should have just let her stay up here and do this, too.
I'm just kidding. Jenny, you'll do just fine.
Okay, thanks.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, as you stated, there is, uh, two parts to this application.
It's a good thing it wasn't you.
Um, the first is a right-of-way encroachment. The applicant, um, this is all of Ballantre, let me skip to where we're going here. Uh, the applicant is requesting to install, um, some additional landscaping, including two stone monoliths at the intersection of Dalmore Lane and Eiderman Road. Um, this is adjacent to the entrance to the Washington Township School, so it's just north of Rings Road. Uh, the entry features will look, uh, similar to the other entry features at Ballantre entrances. Uh, so the first request is then to locate these monoliths within the right-of-way, so the applicant is requesting approval from council for that. Um, in addition, uh, the fees list does, um, distinguish for recognized homeowners associations that they don't have to pay a fee for an amended final development plan, which was required for this, and they did gain approval from the Planning Commission. Uh, but in terms of a right-of-way encroachment application, the fees list doesn't speak to that, and whether, um, that fee should be waived, so the applicant is requesting, um, a waiver, or a fee waiver, um, to regain their twelve hundred dollars that they had to pay, um, for the right-of-way portion of this application. So Planning is recommending approval of both requests from the applicant. And I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Questions?
I just, just have a curious question.
Sure.
As you mentioned, that it didn't speak to this element, and that's why they were coming forward.
Sure.
So, um, is this like the first time we've ever had this happen, or is this, uh...
I, I honestly don't know. We did look through the history and couldn't find other instances where, um, it was located within the right-of-way that this was a problem and had to request that, because we did look into that to see how, if council had made any decisions. I can't imagine that it's never happened, I just was having trouble finding something.
Didn't wind up woods.
That's, I was, I thought so, too, but it was, documentation was hard to find, yeah.
Is there a...
I was just wondering if we needed to change our code, so that this wouldn't be an issue to come forward to council and take up staff's time and...
True.
Now we have to reimburse, and I mean, it's, it turns out to be a costly venture if what we're doing anyway is approving it, you know what I'm saying?
Unfortunately, yes, that's true.
Is there a liability issue, uh, with these stone monoliths sitting out on the right-of-way for us?
I'm sorry?
Is there a liability issue if someone would crash into these stone monoliths, and they're sitting out in the right-of-way?
They are, they have a hold harmless agreement that they do have to sign. I don't know if Paul has anything else he wants to add.
Paul?
Yeah, they are, um, not unlike other monoliths, uh, they are not in the sight-visibility triangle, they're out of the clear zone for this type of roadway, so we don't see any issue.
But I, maybe this wasn't John's question, but, you know, they're in our right-of-way, and if a car was to strike them, I mean, not, not sight triangle, but what if a car strikes them?
I think Mr. Smith will speak to what the Supreme Court has said about the obligation of the motorist to operate their vehicle within the traveled roadway.
Thanks.
There is, yeah, there is a case that says, "Once you leave the roadway, um, whatever's in the right-of-way, you hit it, it's your problem." There was a huge case down in Grove City, in fact, um, a guy left the roadway and hit a huge metal telephone pole, and, um, they said, you know, you've left the right-of, you're, you're, you're only protected while you're on the right-of-way.
Roadway.
I mean roadway, I'm sorry, while you're on the roadway, excuse me.
And then can the city charge the motorists for replacement?
Well, we normally, uh, what we normally do, I mean, normally what we do when we have stuff in the right-of-way is the insurance company, the motorist picks, that has caused damage, picks it up.
So the insurance person does pay his insurance.
Ron Winnington spends a lot of time chasing those down.
Yep. Anyone else? Uh, okay, then. Um, somebody want to make a motion to approve the fee waiver request?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Ian, if you call for the vote?
Um, I'm sorry, Mrs. Zirker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Luck lighter.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Um, I was advised before the meeting, the community plan website demonstration will not occur this evening, because the site's not working. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, so then moving on to, uh...
Mr. Luck lighter, I'm so sorry. We need a second motion to approve the right-of-way encroachment. Did you say both? I'm sorry, I didn't hear both.
No, I...
Sorry, Ann and I were confused.
Well, I didn't, I asked for the motion, so...
Okay.
Um, I, I don't think I did.
Okay.
Let's just make the record accurate.
The two motions.
Thank you, Jenny. Um, uh, and if I could have a motion to approve the right-of-way encroachment.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Ian, if you call for the vote?
Uh, Mayor Luck lighter.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Zirker.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny.
Um, excuse me, so then moving on to council committee reports and council roundtable. Uh, Rick, let's, uh, let's start with you.
Very quickly, I have two items, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, firstly, you know, uh, tonight, we were going to talk about the Avery Park Soccer Field dedication. As all of you know, um, we are in the midst of our task force related to, uh, those killed in action and what, uh, policies we're going to set forth. I would ask that we, uh, we simply table this and, um, and bring it back when that policy is ready, which I anticipate to be the next meeting or so.
Okay. Right, I agree.
Okay, right, as a former speaker.
Sure.
Uh, second, uh, I thought I saw in the packet, but it's not here now, uh, a, a letter from, uh, Steve, your office, regarding a recent application, uh, involving a fence, uh, in the residential area, and that, uh, there was a suggestion that, uh, that that individual applied for relief under the American Disabilities Act.
Yes, um, this is the second one we had, Rick. Um, what we had was a number of years ago, you granted it, um, staff checked it out.
Yeah.
We have suggested, and by the way, those folks, their name was Finney, and they in fact have, um, the child no longer lives there, and the fence has been taken down, which was part of the condition.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm aware of this situation, you know, on Franklin Street, where...
Right.
Uh, they have a, um, unfortunately, disabled child, where they want to put a, a fence for a short period of time, until, uh, he gets a little bigger, that sort of thing, and certainly they would want to take down the fence, uh, at the time when it's no longer required.
What we recommend, and I can't find mine either, Rick, but what we recommend it is that, um, that we establish a protocol that if someone comes in with, um, this kind of request, that, um, they bring medical proof, um, from a physician or the provider of the child, and that because of the American Disabilities Act, we, we grant this with the provision that it be taken down, it done at staff level. We can bring them all back here if you so want, but we just thought it's, uh, it, I mean, we have to, uh, give reasonable accommodations under the American Disabilities Act, and this is the second one we've had in my career here, so...
Well, I, I disagree with that, Steve, and, uh...
Okay.
You know, do we need a motion from council? I don't know how everybody else on council feels, but, uh, you know, I, I certainly feel strong enough to, to offer a motion to, uh, that we set a policy for that.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'd like you, yeah, that's what...
So what, what, I'm sorry, I missed the beginning of what is, what is it your, uh, what's a policy that you're suggesting?
The, the policy that I'm suggesting, that in those rare circumstances, uh, in verifiable circumstances, where someone is looking to, uh, erect a fence, let's say, around their backyard, to aid in the, uh, the raising of the child and the like, that we, as a council, uh, adopt a policy to allow that to happen under the American Disabilities Act.
And I thought that, um, I, I must have read this memo wrong, because I thought that, that it was essentially what you were doing.
Well, that's what we're suggesting we do on the, going forward.
Right.
And that's what we're suggesting. In the past, we bought, if you recall, we bought the, we did a case to you, and we had presentation, and we're suggesting since...
Yeah, I don't think we need to...
Right, that's, that's what we're suggesting is what...
But, yeah, and I, I must have, I left that paper at home, but I thought at the bottom, you were asking for direction from council.
Right, that we, you adopt a policy that just allows us to, allows staff to enforce the American Disability Act with proof that there is in fact, uh, a disability that requires reasonable accommodation.
So it's what your motion is?
That's my motion.
Yeah.
And, and that when the, the, the situation or circumstance no longer exists, that, you know...
Fence must come down, that's correct.
Whatever measures then, it will be removed.
Sell the home, or...
Yes.
Right, that's all in here.
And that's exactly what happened last time.
Right. So even though it's happened infrequently, which is surprising to me, actually, I would have expected it to happen more, more often. But, um, for me, uh, when I was reading it, I want, what I thought of was that I wanted